I'd like to call the zoning board of appeals, a meeting for September 14th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Call order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and the free and just. We'll call for tonight Charles Gaden, chair in attendance, Jacqueline Pratt, vice-chair in attendance, Kevin Danby in attendance, Alfred Wilcox is not in attendance, Erin Caldwell is in attendance, Brenda Dyson, alternate, is in attendance, and Matt Diamond is not here. Seated for this evening will be the five. Unless there is a issue with a particular applicant, you have to recuse yourself, and then we'll discuss it with the applicant. Because you won't have five people seated, so we can give them the option. Okay, starting with 22/23/3C, Gina Cobb seeks a variance of par 10.7.1/10.7.2 non-conformity enlargement slash change. Par 24.6.2 structural coverage, Gateway Conservation Zone, 50% allowed, 20.04 proposed, and par 58.2 and par 58.6 gateway rip to a buffer, structural setbacks, 100 feet required. All activity within the 100 proposed of the Zermex to permit the construction of a 337-foot square pool and hot tub and 80 square foot second storage deck at Five Lighthouse Lane, map 23/lot 77-4, Residence A District Gateway Conservation Zone, Coastal Area Management Zone, AE10 flood zone. It was open on 8/22, 8/10/22, 35 days, 9/13/22, one-day extension granted, 9/14/2022. Needs to close by 9/14/2022 or extension from applicant needed. One of 65 days extended used. Then there's 21/22/27 Frederick and Sandra Sattler seeks a variance of a par 10.7.1/10.7.2 non-conformity enlargement slash change. Par 24.5.3 other line setbacks, 15 feet required, 5.6 feet to the north and 14 feet to the south proposed. Par 24.5.1 street setbacks/25 feet required, 16.2 be proposed in par 24.6.2 structural coverage, 20% allowed, 32.7 proposed of the zoning regulations to permit construction of a 163.2 square foot front porch and stairs at 15 Cottage Road, map 3, lot 21, Residence A District Coastal Area Management Zone. Filed on 5/12/2022, received 6/8/2022, opened a public comment by 9/14/22. 35 of 65 days extension used. And then we have 22/23/4 Stephen Vaughn seeks a variance of par 24.6.2 structure coverage Gateway Conservation Zone, 50% allowed, 70% proposed of the zoning regulations to permit construction of a 336-square detached garage at Six Wheel of Ave Extension, map 24/lot 14, Residence A District Gateway Conservation Zone, Coastal Area Management Zone. Filed 8/12/2022, received 9/14/2022, opened a public hearing by 11/17/2022, 65 days. Okay, with that, we'd like to start with 20/23/3C Gina Cobb. Now, in regards to your application, we did receive, the only thing that we received since our last meeting has been a letter from Gateway, which I will read in. Mr. Charles Gaden, Chair of Old Sabre Board of Appeals, 302 Main Street, Old Sabre, Connecticut, subject variance application Gina Cobb, Five Lighthouse Lane, M23, lot 77, dashboard. As it's meeting, at its meeting on Thursday, August 25th, 2022, the members of the Gateway Commission discussed the project with the applicant and her representative. The applicant's goal for the discussion was to present clarity of information that might allow the Gateway Commission to reconsider its request to have the variance application denied by the zoning board of appeals. Unfortunately insufficient information was presented to allow the Gateway Commission to make such a recommendation. After a long discussion, the Gateway Commission decided a table and a decision where the applicants acquired the additional information that was requested but wasn't available at the time of last night's meeting. The Gateway Commission would take the discussion up again at its next monthly meeting scheduled for Thursday, September 22nd, 2022, when it hopes that sufficient information presented to allow for a thoughtful decision on the proposed project. Until such time, the letter from Gateway Commission dated August 4th, 2022, stands in determination of record. Thank you for considerations from this letter for the Commission, Torrance Downs. Now, based on the fact that we haven't received any new information from you.
Tonight you will.
No, but you can't do it tonight.
Why?
Because you have to, it has to be, we have to have it in advance. You can't just bring it in tonight. We have to be able to review it. So it has to come with a packet.
Well, okay, so, okay, well, okay, so I assume that we would be able to come with the meeting, present the information. You then, we are going to request an extension because we have to go to the meeting next week.
So what we're suggesting is that you get an extension, request the extension, and then you file your paperwork with, with, with the correct people so that we can get copies of it. We don't just, we don't go in on a night of the meeting and discuss.
Well, I want to explain to you what happened at the Gateway Commission and what we, you had concerns last time that you asked me to get answers for, so I'm going to give you.
But what needs to be done is, it needs to be written down and documented and then submitted so that we can have a review. It's, we can't do that tonight.
Okay, you had asked us to get the engineer to put the calculation.
But what happens is, again.
That's what we did.
You, but you can't, you can't give it to us tonight. What has to happen is, it has to be presented, the packet has to be generated, all that information has to be given to us, and it has to be reviewed so that we're prepared for the meeting.
I didn't see, I wasn't aware of that. That's how we brought it to.
I stopped, I stopped the zoning board of appeals in Middletown and planning its zoning in Wetlands. I've never heard of this happening, but if that's your policy, it's fine. But I would like the opportunity to just explain to the commission members where we are with this application going forward.
Do you also have that written for next meeting as well?
Yeah.
I didn't do that.
Okay. We just don't want you to not have the adequate information that you're presenting and give you time to do it properly so that when it comes before us, everything is included.
Because you really need to have all the information in front of us.
The only thing we're preventing is just.
But you can't, but you can't present the night, but you, but he can, but he can, but we don't have to accept it.
If you're not comfortable with it, then you have, you go through the whole spiel. And then if you, hear me out, then if you, they're not satisfied with the amount of time to deliberate on this, to do their due diligence, then they're going to ask for it anyway. If, with what you've heard, you may want to consider presenting it all at one time so at that point it's all fresh in everybody's mind, right?
I was going to do like a five-minute recap for everybody to bring them up to speed. And then if you want me to write that out in a narrative, I will, and you'll submit the plans.
Right. And then you'll have, will have additional documentation from Torrance because you're having a meeting.
Yeah, right.
So we're also, we'll have that in addition to what you're providing.
Right, and some of the information that this commission requested, moving forward at the last hearing on August 10th, I've got some of that information to give to you verbally. Okay, once, so one of the commission members had a question about the glare on the glass. Well, there's coatings that can be applied to the glass to prevent glare and reflection. So that's a commission, that was one thing that we.
And I, I will disagree with you, but what will happen is, if we start just going into discussion, we don't have any updated paperwork in front of us. All we, all we have, all we have is a letter from Gateway. We don't have any updated paperwork from you, we should have had, if you had drawings with the correct.
I wasn't aware, like, at the last meeting, I was online, but I never heard anyone say that we needed to provide all this paperwork before this meeting, so I'm sorry, but I thought we weren't going to present it tonight.
With all the respect, with the chairman and members of the commission, we have a public hearing, that's a legal process that goes forward, okay? At the last meeting, you said you were going to extend it, you had questions, you wanted those questions answered at the next meeting, you didn't say anything about pre-giving the information ahead of time. Usually, the applicant comes at the public hearing, you talk about it, you have some dialogue back and forth, there's minutes, stuff is submitted, and then at the next meeting it's continued, and then you guys make your review and your decision. So if that's different from what you've done in the past, I don't want to upset you guys in any way. We'll come back with a narrative.
If you want to, if you want to go over it, but no decision can be rendered today.
Oh, no, of course.
And I just want you to understand, and then we're going to probably ask the same questions over again because we won't have the drawings in front of us, because normally, believe it or not, we actually look at the packets, okay, we review everything, we go to the property again to see what you've done, okay? And then we, we review all the information you've given, then if we need to, we contact the buildings, inspector, because we don't have the ability to pull all these resources in. And if we need to go back to zoning, you have some questions, we would do that so that we're prepared. So, but, so by just answering a few questions, if, you can do it if you'd like, but we're not going to move forward on anything.
We're not asking you to move forward, we're going to ask you respectfully to continue the meeting to your next meeting in October, because we're not going to have any reports from the Gateway until the end of October.
Absolutely.
That goes without saying. And another question you specifically asked me, you said, I want you to contact the building department and ask them about a wall four feet high around the pool which satisfies the requirements for a fence around the pool, and they, they do, in fact. So.
So, but we, we, we. I'll say that in writing, all states. Well, really would have been helpful if we hadn't drew, if we had the drawing updated with the correct, because then we could go check it, because then what we're going to do is do our own measurements on it again, so we just need to be, we're not prepared.
I understand that, okay, so let's not go.
I didn't think we were allowed to do anything, anything unless it was in front of the public. You know, like, I didn't even think we were allowed to maybe give you statements ahead of time, because I've had these for, you know, a few days now, I would definitely want it all.
The problem is, what time, when would they have needed to get the package information to you so we could redo it?
A week before.
A week before, we would need it a week before.
They revised September 9th, 2022, so we could have done that, but nobody told us.
But, but, but the whole thing is, I really, really think you need that meeting with the Gateway Commission to bring that forward.
Yeah, sure.
Because if it's going, going on the original letter, that's not helping.
I will say one more thing. The Gateway Commission asked us, if we're having 430 square foot additional coverage for the pool, is there any way that you can remove anything that is existing structural coverage? And we can do that, we can remove a brick patio that will be more than, it'll be more than offset the requested variance, and they said that's something that would be great, they would consider. Also, there's no alternative for the pool location because of, there's two septic tanks and two septic fields and there's utilities. So, we will prepare all this to you tomorrow, you'll have it in your next meeting.
Right, then we'll have everything so we can, so we can.
And each one of us gets a package that will be back in the meeting again. And you'll see us again, but we don't want to do a disservice to you by not having an adequate.
And we can't, we can't, right now, we're here.
Right, exactly.
It's just a one v.
Yeah, we'll do the possible.
Because we're all going to need one.
Yeah, but I have one for everybody, we aren't saying we can't.
No, but you can't do it today, right now. I mean, you can, but it's just. But it'll be better if the packet came organized so we don't, okay.
Send it, give it to Sarah, and if you want to give it to Sarah, you can give it.
Yeah, it's only the one original note with the updated information.
It has.
But you have one for my.
I have, yeah. You have like many.
I have 12. Okay, okay, so many, but I need that for you.
Yes, we do.
We need seven, plus more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we apologize, I thought that this is where, I mean, I stand by this, perhaps we weren't clear in our direction.
We apologize for that.
All right, thanks.
I just get lost.
But we're moving forward.
It's, it's all good.
And they can help with some good recommendations.
Good, we're happy to hear.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll see you next one.
Because, I mean, the applicant, Sarah, requested an extension.
I need the extension in writing, so if you could just email it.
Could you just make an email request in writing for an extension? Yeah, anything, just so we have it.
And it has to be dated.
And we apologize for the confusion.
That's okay.
I am, and.
I'm just going to make a note for the record that Sarah is receiving documents for additional drawings for 22/23/3C.
Provided by.
On September 14th.
Can you say that application number again?
Oh, I'm sorry, application 22/23-3C. Okay, with that, we're going to.
Do you have any other questions before we move on?
No, there's none. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we just make, Jake, make more things.
Make a motion to continue.
22/23/3C Gina Cobb.
Here, our next schedule will be.
And October 12th.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? With that, we're going to open public comm, not go, but we're going to open a discussion to 21/22/27 Frederick and Sandra Sattler. Prior to that, I want to give everybody.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
We're going to recuse them.
I know you're going to recuse yourself, so I want to give the, now, the Sattlers, you, because there's only four of us seated, you have the opportunity to, we, to decline tonight because we don't have five people seated, and if we should make a decision, you can't afford to lose one vote, but this is a document that needs to be due to you.
So before, would you be interested in presenting tonight, or would you like five seated and wait until October?
Yes.
No, we, we want, they need five people, you know, they have four. You want to proceed with four, yes.
Yeah, now, but prior to that, though, what we have is, I gave you a document, I'll also give it to you, okay? We have a copy of what the house originally looked like, and what you're presenting on a drawing does not match what the house was originally as built.
We have to know in the record that they approved to present and with four, with four seated members. So you can come forward.
You can come forward, but the, the problem we have right now is with your drawings. If you'd like to come, it's, it's because this is a, this is a, a, this is an issue.
Well, Sharon.
Okay. The drawings that I supplied you, the pictures, you've made changes to the house, okay? Prior to that, post-purchase, prior to coming in front of us. And you did not have a building permit to do those changes.
So it wasn't covered under our original permit?
So, we cannot move forward until your drawing is accurate. And when I say accurate, you have, this is what the house looked like.
Right, right.
Okay, and like that.
Yes.
And this is what you presented to us. Okay, so it's not accurate. This was cut out right here, those stairs weren't there, these stairs were cut back. You have to have the drawing accurate.
Okay.
Okay, so that we know when we go to the table right here, that we know that's accurate. So what you've done is, you've actually enlarged non-conformity without approval.
By putting the stairs on the other side.
Yes, by moving, by squaring off the house and, and adding the stairs to that other area, you've enlarged the non-conformity that you don't have permission to do.
Okay.
So you're going to have to get this drawing accurate. So we really can't make any discussion or decision on this tonight. Because, because this is not right.
Okay.
And we, I, we confirmed with Chris Costa, and there was no permit pulled to, to, to build this corner up.
Okay, on this, you're correct. I, I understand, I'm not going to hold you.
Yeah.
The footprint here, whatever you see there, we left all the old wood on that porch for the building inspector, he inspected it, okay? The reason we moved these stairs are here, we can't get a backhoe in here for the septic system, so we had to bring the stairs to this side of the house.
But what happened is, you did not, you had no building permit to do this. You don't have a building permit to do that, to do that repair, I'm positive you don't.
Okay, then you're right, and I did, I took one permit out.
Right, that, your permit was interior work and some siding, I believe.
Siding, roads, windows.
Right, it did nothing to do with, with squaring off.
Changing this.
So it didn't cover this, you're not covered by your building permit. I confirmed all that.
Okay, so what do we have to do?
So you have to get us a drawing of what you originally had, and then you're going to put the proposal for this on it, because what's happening is, you're already over coverage. So, and so we need to get this, we need to know exactly what our coverage was originally.
Correct.
So that we can then determine what you, what you've done here and what we can illegally allow.
Okay, this area right here, which you see, why, and I'm discussing this, we never changed this. We just, we just, I mean, the roof come this way.
Here's the situation, I know that I've been to the house when it was like.
That's fine.
Okay, I need the drawing to match, okay? Because it wasn't squared up, I know that. So you need to get your drawing to match what the house was when you purchased it so that we can then look at the changes that you want to do to give you a variance.
Okay, that's fine.
And a calculation.
And the calculation, because without those calculations, we don't know where we are.
Okay, so you want to know what happened right here.
Right, and it needs to, so what happened is, we need, this drawing needs to depict what the house was originally and then what you're proposing to do. So, so when we go at it, when we look at these, the table, the existing will have all the correct numbers on it, not this drawing because it's not accurate. And then the proposed will have what it is you trying to do. Okay, okay, so we can, so we can try to get you to what you want, but that has to happen. The drawing has to be correct, okay? Because otherwise we can't move forward.
Okay, fine, no problem, thank you.
Would you like, let me see, do we have, would you like to request an extension?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have to, right?
Yes, yeah. Can you give us an extension in writing?
I'll email it tomorrow.
Okay, you'll email it tomorrow.
Chris Costa.
To Chris Costa.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll do it tomorrow. Don't get me off it.
All right, we just wanted to be correct so we have all the information.
That's all right, that's fine. I didn't think there was anything done wrong with it, we never, we never changed it.
Before we closed? No, no, okay.
So.
You can take all that with you.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Remember to send off the email in the morning.
Right, and what is the actual date of the next?
The 12th, October 12th.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Kevin, would you like to make a motion? Oh, sorry, easy, okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue, file a continuance for application.
21.
21.
20/22-27.
Frederick and Sandra Sattler until October 12th, and I'll second it, thank you.
Yeah, click, all those in favor? Aye, it passed. Okay, with that.
All right, moving along.
Moving on to 22/23/23-4 Stephen Vaughn. Hang on a second. I just want to pass these out.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, are you this? You were commissioned a couple of months ago.
Yes, it was. It, it was approved, now it, it came back to us again, you're absolutely right.
Right.
So, which is unfortunate. And these are pictures that I took. So.
Can you try and just bring me up to speed a little bit on?
And we have to announce that Kevin is being.
Okay, at this point, Kevin is now seated for.
For an application.
For an application for, for 22/23/4 Stephen Vaughn. And what happened here is, we did approve this garage with certain restrictions at the time in May. This was approved in May, because I have the paperwork on it. And then with certain restrictions.
What were those restrictions?
Okay, those were, those restrictions were about windows, in regards to windows, they were in regards to drainage from the gutters to the street, and it also involved the driveway gravel.
And lighting.
And, and we, we specifically stated that they, no spotlights, that's what we stated at the time. And I went back in and I did review the, the minutes, I went back in and reviewed the May meeting where we sat, just to review, and so I'm up to speed on that. And it's in front of us because there were alterations done to the project that were not approved at the time.
Can I just say one thing?
Can you state your name, sir?
Yes.
Stephen Vaughn, and I live at Nine Water Ave Extension. I do agree that there, there were things that were stated in there, but restrictions.
Right.
There was nothing ever mentioned about windows.
Oh, yes, it was, if you go back to the actual meeting and you go to the, if you, if you go to discussion in it, it was definitely stated, it was, absolutely.
No windows?
If you go, if you go back to the May meeting, okay, you can pull it up, it's on record.
That no windows could be on my garage?
No, no windows could be on that other side.
Is that part of the?
That was part of the agreement, yes.
Part of the motion or part of the discussion?
That was part of the motion.
It's not any of my motion.
But it was, it was in discussion, okay, so I know it's still covered, it was. If you go back to the meet, if you go back to the.
Though, if it was, if it was in discussion, but it wasn't made part of the motion, how is it part of the decision?
So. When we spoke about it, it wasn't, maybe not into the motion, but it was, it, it was stated certain things had to be accomplished, okay? And we maybe, we didn't pick every one of them up in the motion, but it was just.
Who made the motion? I mean, they have, I have it right here.
I don't, from what I'm getting, tell me if I'm wrong.
Right.
You're telling me that part of the discussion was about windows, which would be probably highly unusual anyway, but it never made it to the motion, so why, if, if there's.
Well, there's other issues.
The only, the only thing that I, I think would happen is that maker of the motion could recall it and can go from there, but this garage is already up.
Well, the garage is up and it wasn't. Well, the garage is up and it wasn't, it, wha- wha- what we were shown as to what it was gonna look like. It is not what the build ended up being.
Okay, when, when I, I, when I went there, this gentleman was there, he asked to show me something, so I went inside the garage. Because there was, he told me there was an accusation that there was inhabitable, inhabitable space. Upstairs where he wants to put these transom windows up there. And I'm looking up and I'm like, that, there's no way that's close to six feet, so I know it's above where the, where the joy start. That there's, it's not an habitable space.
We weren't, I was never even bringing up that it was an habitable space.
Well, I, I don't know, this is what the gentleman told me, so I don't know where that came from, but I'm just bringing it out, because it's a fact that I learned.
We had just, we had spoken about windows on certain sides, we talked about lighting, we talked about drainage.
That I agree, but never windows.
Okay.
What, what was the reason of you, of the discussion to limit windows on a garage?
Oh, it was, it was, at that particular point, it was a request from the neighbor, and it didn't seem unreasonable at that time. So we were just, and, and we were trying to, uh, satisfy a neighbor's request. And we were trying to, uh, provide him with some relief from gateway to go from fifteen to seventeen percent. And when we were shown pictures of the, of, of the shed, it did not have windows on the side, it did not have a dormer on it either. When you, when it was shown to us, and.
I agree to that.
So it did not have, so what we, our pictorial, what we, what we, uh, uh, thought we were. Agreeing to, did not get built to what we, what is currently there. And I, I blame myself partially for that, so that, uh, because we didn't request really good drawings.
Well, but I understand. I understand neighbors concerned, it's hard for me to, to talk about this, because I wasn't here.
Right.
That's why I, I, I'm trying to educate myself the best I can on this hearing. But I can understand where, you know, we have people say, you know, I don't, I don't want a window, or it's kind of, people in the neighborhood see my bathroom or my windows. I don't understand.
Well, I can think part of it, Kevin, was is that, wh- when we agreed to build something, we had a picture of what it was gonna look like. And we agreed that that's what we were gonna build. And then we built something different. It did not, the, the original request did not have a dormer on the, on the roof, I know it didn't.
True, you know, I'm looking at, looking at pictures here.
No, no, those aren't, that's new.
No, that's the old one.
That's the old one, doesn't have a dormer on, yeah.
That's an enhancement.
No, but it's, it, but when we were approving the document, okay, we were approving that particular structure. So when he built it, it, it built differently than what we had approved, now possibly because I should have required better drawings from the beginning. But I didn't want to, uh, add, pu- put more pressure onto the applicant to provide better drawings. And, uh.
I'm not, I'm not sure that. It's not increasing the footprint, the square footage, or anything else, it's only. It's so much. Pardon?
I don't think it's an egress.
It's not, because you guys have access to it.
It's just, it's just.
Aesthetically.
It's aesthetics, but it doesn't.
Can you pass on around, please, so that we could all kind of come together?
It's aesthetic, I, I would be very, very tired of life.
Well, if he could have got other tools, he could have. I believe there's other issues with the property this morning, too.
Oops.
I almost, uh. Did an ice skate across the.
So are, are we saying that this is a, a new hearing before it's for approval of a garage?
Well, that's, that's what I'm, this is like a new appro, this is, are we going for a new approval? Because on your drawing. I mean, I, I, there's pictures of the shed.
You're, you're looking for approval to build a garage.
Right.
Well, no, not the garage.
But that's what this says, yeah, but. So if you're denied, if you're denied. Somebody's gonna look, look to have you take that garage out, if you move forward with this.
That's not, that's not the reason why I'm here, I'm, I'm here because of, I wanted the transom window, and I'm sure other applicants have changed their mind when they were building the wrong way. It's, it's a transom window. And, um.
Is a transom window going here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that's.
And it's, it's only for aesthetics, and it's only to let natural light come into the garage. And instead of, um, skylights, the old style way, I mean aesthetically that looks nice here, the old skylights, they leak and all that, so I, you know, I went with that.
And what is this, it doesn't, it's eight foot by six foot eve overhang with posted doorway.
Well.
You know, that, that wasn't part of the original either.
True.
So what's happening is, you're changing, you're now, it's like, it's, you're coming back to the, to the, uh. To the well one more time after we approved a, uh, a project, because if you look at this drawing. On this drawing now, now we have the transom window added on, and now we have an eight foot by six foot eve overhang with, uh, with posted doorway with some chicken scratch on it.
With what?
Some type of, uh, like a line, I think you wanted to put an overhang over here?
Yeah.
But you, so what's gonna happen is.
I, I, because they told me I had to come back, so I figured, okay, I'll come back, they told me I had to come back, the building department said. You have to go back for, for the, um. The transom window, so I said, well, okay, I'll ask them for, for an overhang for inclement weather.
But what happens is, on this particular drawing, this will be inadequate, okay, for a drawing for that. We need a real drawing with real dimensions, so we can actually see it, and it would also need to be on your.
Yeah, this needs to be, if you're, was there a site plan?
It is a site, we have a site plan. The site plan does not show that.
Well, it shows a fourteen by.
Right, doesn't show a transom, I mean, it's, it's, it doesn't show a, uh.
An over.
An overhang, eve, so you change, so that's, that, that counts as coverage.
Alright, and that, I mean, I did the math on that, that turns out to be.
But it doesn't matter if you did the math. You would have to follow procedures.
I know, a drawing that's on this show indicates all different types of measurements.
Well, that's why I submitted that.
This is not gonna be acceptable to us.
They accepted it.
The, the, we won't accept this.
What do you mean, they accepted it?
Well, they took it, they didn't accept it.
Oh, I can think when they.
It's only.
Perhaps when you handed it to them, that became part of your package.
Right.
But if you're coming before the board and you're looking for approval for something, you want us to be very educated in what you want us to be prepared to.
Okay, so if I don't ask for the eve overhang, I'm looking for the transom window, and I, I can't see why I can be denied the transom window.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying you would be denied the transom window, but you've added in the overhang, okay? Which, which then affects coverage, which then affects all the map, okay?
In that table.
On that table, okay?
So the table tells us all these different various calculations that add up, and it tells us, okay, you, you're either within coverage or over coverage, things have to start moving around.
Well, well, alright, and it turns out to be seventeen point six percent coverage.
It, but it doesn't matter, because you haven't, you haven't put it in the drawing, so you haven't given us a drawing showing depicting how it's gonna lay out.
Okay.
We don't have any dimensions on it specifically.
Let's forget the, the eve overhang and the tran, I'll stick with the transom window, so.
Okay, so. Right now, you're coming before us. For a change to the garage that you added on, and you would like to have a transom window installed for natural light.
For natural light.
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely, and we're taking off the table the eight foot six, eight foot by six foot eve overhang, which we don't have any information on. That was on here, Kevin, on this drawing.
No, I, 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 and I, I don't like seeing that, I don't know, I mean, that, this should have been updated, with, with, look, I don't. I'm not saying I have a problem with the overhang.
No, I don't either, I just have to have it, I have to be documented.
I do have a problem with is this application, this application is asking to build a garage that was approved two months ago. As far as the transom windows, I don't even understand, either the maker of the motion has to recall it, and then change the minutes.
Right.
Or the motion stands.
Right.
And the motion doesn't have the transom, and furthermore.
Yeah.
It, even if he put the dormer on, he's not, he's within his setbacks, he's can do it by right.
Uh, no, he can't, because he's in gateway, and he's, he's over the fifteen percent, so we have to.
Doesn't increase coverage.
But it, that does increase coverage, not, not the, not the transom, but the overhang increases coverage.
Exact, I agree completely.
The transfer doesn't increase coverage. I, I agree with you.
Two separate things, and I'm saying, forget the.
He's not doing the overhang, he's going to negate that. In the event that he wants to down the road, come back before the board, he's going to update.
Right.
And include any new additions to his garage to reflect that.
Yeah, right.
Is this, is this been inspected by the building inspector?
Yes.
It, so the.
The transom?
Have you closed the building permit on this?
No, no.
What's open?
It's open.
It, the whole thing is open.
Yeah, it can't be.
Is, so what kind, you've had a, you, 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 what kind of inspections are you at?
Yeah, the, the inspector came out for the initial. This, this is my, my building, Tom.
Uh, so. He did, he did the typical putting of foundation.
Yeah.
He's one, he's actually, there's that real framing inspection.
He did, okay.
Can you state your name?
Please state your name for the record.
Tom Strohmeier.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so.
It has the hurricane.
I, I don't care, so you haven't had a final inspection?
I don't know, no.
What is the, uh?
I think you have to extend.
I think, I think, I think he needs to withdraw this.
Right, because.
Well, because it's not what he's really wants.
Right, what you really want is the dormer.
But, but Chuck, it doesn't, he's under the height.
The tran, and add the dormer, the transom.
The transom, the transom, the whole different ball game, it wasn't even, when I was there yesterday, he took, he asked me to come in and look at the garage, and I did, you don't have a little, little space upstairs. There was no mention of, oh, by the way, I'm doing this.
Right.
Because this is not what we see. What we see, would you just take a pen and put this, and there's nothing on here, it changes the table here, it kind of looks like you're trying to just sneak it in.
Yeah.
Not saying you do that, but that's what it, that's what it kind of looks like.
And I'm saying, we will negate that part of that, but. I'm here tonight for that transom window, it doesn't create any further coverage.
This says nothing about transom, this says you want permission to build a garage.
That's right, this doesn't say any about transom windows.
In my opinion, and I'm not a lawyer, this should be withdrawn, and it should be, a new appeal should come in for something else, but. Well.
That, this application is the new appeal.
But to build a garage.
Yeah.
To build a.
Build the garage with.
A transom. Because the garage is already built now.
Why would he need ZVA approval to put a, to put a dormer with transom windows, let me just hear me out. If he isn't increasing coverage, so.
He changed the design.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't, he can, he's, you know, unless, to your point, if it was conditioned, no, no windows on that side, that's one thing. I don't see any evidence where it says that, so the maker of the motion needs to deal with that, he's not here.
He's not here right now. Uh. I, it's a problem. Because. Because I, when I went back in, when I went back in, in reviewed the minutes, I went back in and rewatched the May meeting. So, uh, and I agree with you, it was stated in the, in the, in the discussion, but it wasn't put into the motion. So since it's not in the motion, it's not relevant.
And I believe, and I don't know the mechanics of this.
Yeah.
That the maker of the motion can recall this. Amended. Amend the minutes, and that's what stands.
What I'll do is.
I don't know if there's a timeline.
I may have to contact Chris and see if we can, how do we go back and amend it, because. If it's not in the motion, how could they have not, how could they have denied it? If it wasn't in the motion.
Why, what are we amending if it's not there? Or are we adding it?
Well, you're, 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 you're trying to add the condition of no windows on that.
Of no windows on that.
But so, if he puts a dormer up there with no windows. He can, I, I, in my opinion, and I'm happy to hear anything, any facts to the contrary, that you're not changing square footage, you're not adding.
No, we aren't.
Any kind of coverage or, it isn't like there's a second floor that's finished that you're adding, it, it even with that, he's, he's still gonna be waiting.
What, and I agree with you on that, hundred percent, okay, I agree with you because he's only, was that, it was a maximum of fifteen, because he, he's in gateway, but he wasn't near the water, so.
Exactly.
And I, and I have no problem with that, and I don't even have a real problem going back and, and adding the, uh. This, this overhang, if it's done correctly, okay, with the drawing, that's, with a drawing, and if you want to make it part of the.
Well, I, I, like I said, I'll come another time for that, but, but the transom window, I'd like to get that approved tonight. Because it's not, I have a motion right here, and that's not written in well's motion.
I can't, uh, with, without the. Uh, the individual who made the motion, and without me discussing it with Chris, I need to discuss this with Chris, so I can determine the proper way to move forward on this, I do not have an answer at this point right now.
Can I just, let me just read, in the application, it proposed use, proposing, this is your word, you filled this out?
Yes, sir.
Proposing new construction of single car detached garage, structure measuring. Uh, fourteen by twenty-four in equal size area, in. What? Fourteen feet. Fourteen square feet by twenty-four feet square feet, which is. Not correct, not the correct language, in size equally gross coverage of three hundred and thirty-six. What's the size of the original garage?
Three hundred and thirty-six.
Exactly, so, so, but, but now you're saying you want to add, you're adding the overhang, which. Further makes me worry about this, because it's in a, in this, kind of, just kind of. Well.
It's not even on the application.
So how this whole thing started was, was I put the dormer up there, and apparently my neighbor complained about it. I came here because I was told that I had to reapply the application. So I submitted the application again. And they.
You know, and I think, I think part of this is, part of this is that you, you don't really understand this, that you're, it's something you've done once in your life, and that's, that's fair. I, I totally get that, that's okay, it's, it's okay not to do those, but I think you need some help through this.
Right.
You know, however that, whatever that might be, because to come, to, to come in and ask permission a second time to build a garage that doesn't exist with a. If you had representation, whether it's an architect, lawyer, or whoever, they would have told you, look, if you need to change this, this is. Not what you want, because you're asking for something completely different, and even in your, in your description, you're not asking for the overhang.
Well, okay, that part I do understand, but back to just the transom window, I can't see why that can't be approved.
Because I don't think you, I don't think you need approval for that, I think you have it by right, except. It was supposed to be a condition, you were here, you heard, you know, I wasn't here.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm objecting to that, because I hope not here.
You can go all over, come, come down here and listen to the entire thing.
Yeah, it's on YouTube.
And then you'll, you'll know what the deal is, you know, what was said and what wasn't said. But you're not showing me anything.
I mean, I, I gotta like state my life, there was, there was no mention of windows on that side.
Well, you got yourself, and you have everybody else that says that there was.
Right.
So, if your neighbor thinks that there was.
And it, and it's not in there.
If you, if you go to the, and if you go back and review the minute, the meeting, the, the, the physical meeting, which is on tape. It was specifically mentioned, so I have to now talk with Chris, because I'm sure that's why it's, this is causing this problem right now. So I have to understand what we can do to remedy it.
So do we table this at this point, or do we?
Have you, the public hearing's been opened, right?
Right.
Yeah.
He, he can ask to continue it, he could withdraw. To his.
And if you withdraw, then you could reapply.
So.
No.
No.
You, you need to, we.
So that being the best way to do that is.
You have to decide that for yourself, you heard a lot of conversation during the.
But we don't want to deny, because.
No, but I'm just saying, if, under that condition, that's the procedure, but in the procedure right now.
So I'm not, we're gonna be denied without prejudice.
Yeah, it could be denied without prejudice.
But I'm not withdrawing my garage that's already built. Right?
You're, you, you know, if you want to withdraw, appeal.
The good news is this.
Only this specific appeal.
Appeal twenty-two slash twenty-three dash four. That would be your decision, or you can continue it.
Right.
I don't know as far as amending it, I mean, it's, it's. Maybe it can be amended. Maybe you just want to continue it, but you know, this is. And I know, I know you're in a tough spot, because. Maybe you should have, maybe you should ask to continue it. And if later you, you withdraw, you can have, you can withdraw, come to something else, or maybe they'll allow you to completely change this. So that it, it's. And submit things that we need to see. You can understand that. You know, you, you, you mentioned you were, you're a law enforcement for your, your career, you know it, you know all about details. But I don't, I don't blame you for not knowing details on land use. How, how would you know?
It, it's very difficult, to be perfectly honest.
We want to, I, I, we want to work with you, but you gotta, you gotta give us somewhere to hang our hat.
Alright, so the best way to go is ask for a continuance on this?
That's up to you.
Yes.
Is that what you're asking for?
Uh, uh, well, the continuance will help me if I go to the, um. What's her name, Chris Costa, and straighten this out.
Straighten this out, yes. That's it. And then if you, and then I, you, if you go back to land use, okay, and discuss the problem. With them in regards to this. And then I will also work, I will also, uh, get involved with the land use myself. To determine what was going on. I will then get involved with the building department. I'll take on that too, to find out. Why they believe. So if, why they believe they can't put that up there. So i- if, if it's not in the motion, but they, but we did state it, it was just in discussion. Prior to the motion that was made. Uh, is that why there's an issue? Otherwise, Kevin is correct. It's not. Adding anymore. You're well within the building envelope. You're, we, we've given you the.
Guys are like seventeen percent.
Yeah, we give you seventeen percent coverage, which isn't an issue. And we just want to get that one thing resolved as to why they're rejecting it. And why they had you come back and resubmit the entire garage again, as opposed to just.
Just specifying.
I didn't understand that. And I asked her that, she said you need to resubmit the whole thing, and that was Ms. Costa.
You know.
Did you?
Field, field changes and construction are done every day.
Oh, I understand.
So even if it wasn't in your original plan, I don't hate the guy because he changed it. And if they're gonna say that, well, it's a technicality and, you know, he's coming out this much and, you know, we approved. Well, actually, your, your approval is square footage, you're not excluding, you don't.
Exactly.
Pitch of the roof.
Is that what?
So you can't say. I guess you can say whatever you want. I'll, I'll leave it there.
And, and just to quote us, she told me. That I have to come back because I added a dormer for a transom window. That's why she told me I had to resubmit the whole thing. Those are her words.
Well, I'll have to get some more information on that. And, and I would recommend that you go back to them and discuss this too also.
Any input?
And were you talking with Chris? Were you talking with the receptionist behind the counter?
I, I spoke with both Chris and Sarah.
Okay, so. And Sarah's out of country right now, so I can't discuss it with her, so she'll be back Monday. I think the best thing to do is, uh, to. Ha- have a, request an extension. So that we can get to the bottom of this, because I don't see this as being unreasonable. We just have to find out why they felt that was an issue.
Clarification of the details.
Right, okay. Because we're not trying to approve the whole garage again.
No.
We've already approved it.
And I mean, picture me, that's why the, the whole thing made no sense to me and I was trying to get some reasoning from her. As to why, and she said because of the dormer. Because you want to put the transom window with the dormer.
Did she think that the, um, overhang was included in on that when you were talking?
I didn't even mention that, overhang to her. I figured.
That would lend me to.
I only figured why I was coming here, I would, I would additionally ask for that.
But if, should you ever want to ask for something. This is not the place to physically do the ask at the time. The, the, the place to do the ask is. When you're submitting your paperwork. Saying, I'd like to make, uh, an additional change to the property. You'll update your drawing. Yeah, it's, so it will show what's happening so that, so that the, uh, the coverage is correct. And then it would show a picture of elevation. Uh, because I, you know, that's what we really, in, in reality, we should have had a picture of elevation of, of the garage. And so that we have all this information. And so that it's done correctly. But why are you doing this? If you'd like to discuss with addition, why are you discussing the dormer? If you would like to add on. That overhang. That might be the time to do it, okay? I'm not saying it is.
No, I, I, I got you there on that part, but I, I just. Once again, for the record, I just wanted to state it that she told me that I had to reapply this whole thing. Because of that dormer.
Well, also, you, you don't, you. If you're not familiar with land use. Um. Something was probably said in between, if you didn't catch.
Yeah.
Because Chris is, Chris does a very, very, very good job. Of everything she does in land use. She, she knows what to do and how to do it. So you, you missed something in there because you're not familiar with the rest.
And that's okay.
And it's okay, because be honest with you, when I read it. I didn't even know why you were coming back in front of us.
I'm, I'm thinking, oh.
Coming back in front of us for this, because it didn't even mention. It's, it's not even mentioned anywhere in the new proposal, I mean, the new, in the new document. Why you were even coming in front of us, except you wanted to build another garage.
Right, and that's what's hard interpretation.
Well, I, I apologize for that.
No worries.
I'm just going by what she said, when she told me I had to resupply the whole application again for that. That's exactly what I did.
Well, it's a whole application, but it's for something different.
Right. I don't know what she specifically said to you.
Maybe within the application, you have to specify. On your garage, what you, it could have been, mixing words are sometimes easy because you're. I don't know, distracted, there's a lot going on in the hallways here, um, but definitely let us know so that we can make a motion and move forward. How would you like?
I'll go with the continuance, so I can talk to, um, Ms. Costa and. Straighten this out with.
Okay, and then on our end, we're also gonna do some due diligence as well. So we're all, when we reconvene the.
I have information too.
We're all on the same page.
So, and I, I've committed to contacting the building inspector to find out why that was an issue. And I will work with, uh, with, with Chris Costa's office to determine why. That came up, since it wasn't specifically stated in the motion, but it was in discussion. Is that where they picked it up? So I need to understand what, what was the, and, and how do we fix it correctly?
Right. Would you like, uh?
I'd like a motion.
Like to make a motion to continue twenty-two slash twenty-three dash four, Stephen Vaughn. On Mike Willard Avenue extension, till our next regularly scheduled meeting, October twelve.
Yes.
My second. Okay, also.
All in favor? I, I, uh, you need to put a formal request in for an extension.
No, keep them in.
So we haven't closed public, okay, fine. So I wanted to make sure, so you just not have to do that. We apologize for the confusion and I, and.
We'll get to the bottom.
The reason I didn't want to go into the garage. I know that you didn't want, that there was nothing up there, okay, so I knew that. I just was trying to understand. I didn't even know what I was looking at.
I mean, I even took a measurement and it's, 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 um, four feet, seven inches.
No, I, what I'm getting at is, it wasn't clear. What we were even approving, other than a garage.
I'm like, okay, we'll put. Another garage somewhere. Alright, we'll get to the bottom.
Alright, thank you very much.
You're welcome, how many?
You as well, thank you.
Okay, with that, uh, new business. Well, I have, I have information in regards to the, uh. The ninety-nine Essex Road, Old Saybrook, which is the, uh, Artico Restaurant. Uh, we, we won that. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware. I, I know you know, but that was new business and, and we did win that particular case. And you should have all gotten copies from, uh, like, from Chris and Mike on that. Uh, the minutes. Does anybody have any issues with the minutes as, as currently printed?
No.
Could I get a motion to accept the minutes?
So.
All in favor?
I.
Second, like, who said this? You seconded all. Perfect. With that. Uh, correspondence and announcements, there are none. And, uh, uh, committee representation and staff reports, there were none. And, uh, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Perfect.